I feel so as we're in the same district, so we thought it's just as terrible sometimes. He's delighting. We're in these schools together. He's not so big. Yeah, I don't think so. He needs to be done. And he's ready. And see if they all see it. Of course, that experience. I have to admit, I'm shocked. But they are too gracious. They see your success. They see your success.
I'll now call it order, the November 6, 2024 meeting of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors. We will start by hearing the invocation led by Pastor or given by Pastor Harden Crowder of Dover Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Tom Winfrey. Please stand as you are able.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, today we lift up the members of the Goochlin Board of Supervisors. As we meet today, Lord, we thank you for their dedication and their willingness to serve our community. Lord, please guide them with wisdom and understanding. Help them to make decisions that are fair and just, and always keeping the well-being of our residents in mind. We pray for patience to listen with one another, courage to face through issues, and unity in our purpose. Lord, may this meeting be marked by respect and peace and a mind for progress. Let each voice be heard, and let the work today bring blessings to our community. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
And with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Next, we will have the presentation of a proclamation recognizing Sally Graham upon her retirement from Goochlin Cares. Ms. Biskaywitz will read the proclamation while Ms. Graham accepts. If Ms. Graham would meet us on the floor now.
Whereas in 2024, Sally Graham marks her 25th anniversary as Executive Director of Goochlin Cares, an organization providing neighbors in need with basic human services and healthcare. And whereas Sally Graham has epitomized the qualities of a visionary leader, solidifying the organization's reputation as a safety net for immediate food, housing, health, safety, and other basic needs. And whereas with both a deep passion for Goochlin Care's mission and a comprehensive understanding of rural healthcare challenges, Sally Graham has fostered the success of both her employees and the communities they serve. And whereas Sally Graham has enhanced Goochlin Care's vision of an equitable community through her limitless energy and compassion, as well as her commitment to empowering Goochlin County residents to lead lives of self-dignity and well-being. And whereas Sally Graham was instrumental in the merger of Goochlin Fellowship and Family Services and Free Clinic of Goochlin in 2007, and the subsequent growth of the organization to encompass 12 human services programs. And whereas during Sally Graham's tenure as Executive Director, Goochlin Cares raised $8 million towards the construction of a one-stop-shop campus of integrated human services delivery. And whereas in recognition of her dedication to her profession, Sally Graham has been honored by her peers as an Allen &amp; Allen Hometown Hero in 2015, was nominated for the Richmond Times-Dispatch Person of the Year in 2016, was named a YWCA Richmond Outstanding Woman of the Year in 2019, and was honored to be on the Goochlin County Wall of Fame in 2023. And whereas Sally Graham has also given generously of her talents to health initiatives and memberships like Patient-Centered Medical Home Collaborative, the Capital Region Free Clinics Collaborative, the Virginia Association of Free and Charitable Clinics, the Richmond Region Domestic Violence Collaborative, EmpowerNet, Goochlin Community Partners, Community Partnership for Oral Health, Goochlin Rotary, St. Mary's Episcopal Church, and has served by appointment by the Virginia Governor to the Richmond Region Initiative related to healthcare reform. And whereas with great vision and enthusiasm, Sally Graham has made a profound and lasting impact on the lives of many in central Virginia and serves as an inspiration to all citizens of the Commonwealth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the citizens and staff of Goochlin County, hereby commends, recognizes, appreciates, and sincerely thanks Ms. Graham for her exemplary and unremitting dedication and service to Goochlin County, and offers her best wishes for a well-earned and happy retirement.
And that's not all.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move that the Goochlin Board approve the resolution recognizing Ms. Sally Graham upon her retirement from Goochlin Cares.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resentment.
I don't know what to say except thank you. It's been an honor.
Thank you. I like to tell people we're honoring, that if they do so many awesome things, that's why they have to stand up there with me for a long time. So, thank you, Ms. Graham. We'll now move on to Chair comments. Let me say, it's been another busy month in Goochlin. We had the Goochlin Fall Festival, which had a great turnout, and the weather could not have been better. We've had town hall meetings to provide our citizens with an update on what's going on with our, all our county departments and schools. Thanks to all staff for their great presentations and responses to citizen questions and comments. I really view these town halls and the ones that we'll do next year in the first half as transparency in action for getting live updates and being able to question all the supervisors and Vic and Dr. Carmody as well. We had a legislative discussion with the Goochlin delegation, that is John McGuire, Tom Garrett, and David Owen at Central High School. That was a great two hours where we got to discuss ideas that were pressing to the county and how our delegation could best enact those things in this upcoming session and in future sessions. In regards to Station 8, we have put up a sign, and the design is in progress, so that will be, you know, over the next 12 to 18 months, you'll see that rise, and we're excited about that. We had a new precinct, Precinct 403, open in eastern Goochlin, and as far as we can tell, everything was a resounding success. So, I know Avery Point is very happy about that. And we had a business appreciation event at Hardywood, so a lot of great events that staff did and that supervisors attended, and shows very well for Goochlin County. I will also report that the 2025-2026 budget preparation has started. Departments are starting the process, and brainstorming between supervisors and staff leadership has begun. We will have a balance, I will say, and commit to us having a balanced budget with first-class services and facilities to focus, as always. And finally, I want to express appreciation on behalf of, I think, all the board for the hard work of Goochlin's Electoral Board and their entire team, both staff and volunteers. Early voting is a long and arduous process. I know it allows every vote to be counted, but, you know, the county has to make sure we have all the people manning those stations and doing it the right way. So if you see somebody on the Electoral Board or anybody you noticed at the polls, give them an attaboy or a hug if you feel comfortable. And then particularly, I want to thank Ryan Mulligan, our registrar, and our Electoral Board members Pam Johnson and Robert Walker, and their Secretary Wanda Taylor. So those are the Chair comments for this past month. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, just a few things coming up in the month ahead of us. As a reminder, Monday, November 11th will be Veterans Day. The county offices will be closed, as we recognize and thank those of us among us who served in all the branches of the military, either presently or have in the past. Also, on November 16th will be our Shred Day and Tire Amnesty Day. That's going to be over at the old Fairgrounds location by the roundabout Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will be accepting, of course, 10 tires, but also this year we're accepting agricultural tires that has had to be off their rims. When you bring it in, you do need to be a resident of Goochlin County. Then Thanksgiving coming up as well this month. County offices will be closed half-day on Wednesday, all day on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th in observance of that. And then finally, one of the things that makes us so special, the County Christmas Tree Lighting and Holiday Celebration will be Friday, December 6th, again in the field by the roundabout, Napa Field, and we'll also be doing the Santa Calling on December 12th. If you have young children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, or friends who would like to get a call from Santa, reach out to Parks and Rec. It's one of the neatest things we do, and again, just another example of what makes Goochlin such a great place. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. We will now, I will now ask for a request to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation. Are there any additions or deletions from supervisors? No? Seeing none, we will now move on to citizens' comments. We'll now open the floor to citizen comments. Each speaker must give their name and address. Citizens are reminded that comments should be about items not covered by the public hearings being held later tonight. Comments should be respectful and no more than three minutes in length. Should multiple citizens wish to have a common speaker, they may cede their time in two-minute increments up to a total allotted time of 10 minutes. Per Board's Rules of Procedures, Section 3.2, a reasonable period of time intended to not be more than an hour is allocated for citizens' comment period. I'll now open.
Good afternoon. Linda Moore, 2164 Prophet Road, Manneken Sappit, Virginia, District 4. I am pleased to report that October was a very productive meeting for our small group that we've now assembled. I would also like to thank Ms. Sherry for getting back to us to outline what the concerns are with Manneken Town. We need to make sure that we are kind of understand the guardrails around development. We all know that development is going to be here, but we also need it to be in line with the standards that we expect here in Goochlin County. So I would like to thank Ms. Sherry for getting back. I would also like to thank Mr. Carpenter and Sheriff, I mean Sheriff, Chief Ferguson and the Fire Marshal for coming to do a program for the Tuckahoe Bridge community early in October. You are all doing a wonderful job, and it's sometimes I don't think we have enough appreciation for the hard work that goes on behind closed doors. Thank you very much. Have a beautiful rest of the day.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Can we give them more than three minutes if she compliments?
No, I could be here all night.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Keith Burgess, District Manager for Monakin Soil and Water Conservation District. Hopefully you all should have one of these that were passed around. If not, I'll make sure you get one. It's a copy of our annual report. I won't go over that. I'll let you all look through that through your, at your leisure. Last week, Monakin coordinated the agricultural portion of the Goochlin Leadership Enterprise Program, Virginia Department of Forestry, Department of Corrections-Agribusiness, Virginia Cooperative Extension, and Monakin presented programs. And I think we should all be proud of those participating in that program to become better educated citizens and hopefully future leaders, community leaders of our county. Sky Brickhouse, a Virginia Cooperative Extension agent, was nominated to fill the absentee, to fill the Virginia Cooperative Extension position on our Soil and Water District Board. His nomination will go before the Virginia Soil and Water Conservation Board for approval in December with a four-year term starting in January. Monakin continues conversations with the county staff as related to conservation easements. We had our financial and administrative audit a few weeks ago, and there were no findings related to abuse, misuse, or unaccountability of funds nor other administrative processes. So there, we continue to implement and develop new policies and procedures to make sure we're implementing best business practices. For the agricultural community, Monakin has approved just over $900,000 for the implementation of agricultural best management practices. And last month, we were facing a flood last month when I presented before you all. Luckily, the flood elevation stayed about a foot to a foot and a half below what was predicted, so we didn't have those disasters that we had originally projected last month when I talked to you all. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burgess. Any other citizen comments? Okay. Seeing none, I will now close the floor. We'll now move on to approval of minutes. Members of the Board, you have in front of you the minutes from the meeting of October 1st, 2024, and the meeting with the Legislative Delegation on October 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve them?
Mr. Chair, I move the Board approve the action minutes for October 1st and 23rd, regular and legislative meetings.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The minutes are approved. We'll now move on to reports. I'll now ask Mr. Marshall Wynn to present the VDOT report to the Board. All other reports are included in your packet. Mr. Wynn?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Carpenter, Marshall, Wynn with VDOT. For October, we had 157 work orders and completed 153, had 11 call-outs. Most of those call-outs were trees down the road and a couple of stop signs down. For the months, we've been doing regular maintenance activities, pothole and asphalt repair, piping inspection and cleaning, ditch and shoulder repairs, tree brush removal and cleanup, completed our second cycle of secondary mowing, and have started our fourth cycle of primary mowing. They should have that done within, probably not by the end of this week, by the end of next week. Be the last cycle for the year. All resurfacing schedules have been completed. Only other thing I have, up at Elk Island, when we did have that flood, we had a lot of debris up there. A bridge contractor is out there right now cleaning the debris up right now, so should be finished probably next week. Other than that, I don't have anything else, not unless y'all have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Wynn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Mr. Wynn, how are you?
All right.
I may be giving you undue credit, but I want to give credit that the Boscoville Creek Road, I was there yesterday, and there has been some packed gravel put down to alleviate the speed bump between the three-inch resurface that was put down this, I'll say, this summer. It looks like a temporary, because a good hard rain will wash that out, so I believe you and Mr. Gillespie are having ongoing conversations as to how we might make that a more permanent, because it really was becoming a safety hazard where you were hitting that three-inch lip and trying to get out into traffic in a 55-mile zone, so.
Okay.
Mr. Potter's has advised, I will probably be getting the majority of the spraying herbicide questions, because I got two this week as to, and we never sure if it's VDOT or you, but the question was, why is the spraying be done 10 feet off the road on scrub brush that is maybe two feet high? And my commitment was, I would ask, so I asked.
I have told roadside, no more spraying in Goochlin, so it's got to be Zapco, Dominion, somebody like that.
That's what I call them, too.
So, our roadside people have been instructed not to spray anymore.
Okay. All right. I will carry that, tap back.
All right.
And our sheriff and our county administrator got to see what I think is a Jackson Pollock piece of art on the road there where River Road comes into Six with, I believe, copperstone. There is some very fascinating striping that has been done on that intersection. I was pulling through that intersection yesterday, coming from River Road, looking to head west on Six, so when I pulled out and was in the intersection, I then had two cars behind me. Each come out, it was like a NASCAR starting, because they were parallel with me. I'm not sure what we can do to educate folks, but that intersection is, I'm going to use the word confusing, because I'm not sure that we here in the county understand what the inverted diamonds mean in the crosswalk striping, and that intersection just needs attention beyond the striping, is what the message is.
We'll, we need to get together and take a look at it, but that was part of the signage and trying to eliminate the wide intersection where three people are abreast going through the intersection.
Well, they were doing that yesterday with the new signage.
With, with the striping and everything.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I was, I think, following the rules, because I was the first there, so I think I was in my lane, but.
Understood.
It's, and Mr. Carpenter has seen it, so it's, Jackson Pollock would be proud, I would just say.
Understand.
And I did attend the public meeting last week, or last month, actually, there, that was at the Wyndham, and I really do appreciate that you all put that on. It was well-attended. There were a number of Goochlanders there.
Yes.
And I'm not sure if any hurry-up or any abbreviation on the diverging diamond has come out of that. I know I spoke to some of your colleagues about the 623 diverging diamond as to.
I mean, that's moving forward.
Yes, sir.
But at what pace, I cannot tell you, so.
And I guess I could ask the county administrator, but you're here. The Rockville Road Safety Study, I know that has been a work in progress, is that?
It's not completed yet.
Okay.
For the speed limit you're talking about and the safety study?
It was a safety study, I believe.
Yeah.
Not just the.
Okay.
Is that a work in progress?
Yes.
Yes, there is a draft is out there, but it's not a final product yet.
Okay. I've got questions I was asked about that, too, so I'm the messenger.
Okay.
And let's see, striping, spraying, oh, and that's it. That's it for me. But thank you, and if you did put the gravel down, thank you for that.
You can call me anytime.
As you know well, I do.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Mr. Spooner?
Mr. Lyle, as comments created a thought, wanted to thank you and your peers for meeting last month to go over the costs and how the escalations have been occurring. I just, it was very well-attended, and folks were open to hearing our concerns, and I just really appreciate that, so thank you and your team for that.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Wynn, thank you very much.
All right.
Do any board members wish to report on any regional boards that they're serving on? So, Neil, Mr. Spooner.
That's all right. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Been a busy month since kind of re-engaging with CVTA and Plan RBA. On CVTA, I was voted in as Finance Chair. Since that time, we've been working on getting approval to, and sort of beta-testing our ability to issue bonds for projects. The county has weighed in. County Administrator and team have put together a white paper regarding the county staff, which we will be taking a lead to educate all of the region on our thoughts, so that folks understand Goochlin's position and how we could potentially benefit from bonding but are also protected, ensuring that we're protecting our AAA ratings. So that's been interesting. Another thing that we discovered was that last year, the Board had implemented a policy to create some reserves. However, no plan was ever created to fund the reserves, so we are working on that. We had some interest revenue that we had earned, so we put half of the money towards the funding of that and are creating a plan to move forward, so that will be in place. From a Plan RBA perspective, we had our audit, and everything came out great. Why I'm bringing this up to y'all is that the Executive Director met with a lot of the county administrators to discuss a shortage of about $50,000 for some projects that they want to do. Most of it were Plan RBA, besides for grant monies, which is how they operate, operates on with money from each locality based on the size of their citizenry. So to cover that gap, they are proposing a five cent per hundred-person increase, which would probably be a little bit less than $1,000 to Goochlin. I spoke in opposition to that, however, it will be going forward to the full commission for support. The reason I voted, I spoke in opposition of it was not because we don't benefit, we, for what we pay, we get so much more out of Plan RBA for what our small contribution is, being one of the smaller localities, but it was more that I kind of, I felt that in a, you know, $5 million budget, we could find $50,000 somewhere else, so just wanted to alert the Board of that, and if you have thoughts on that. Obviously, this is not a, this is a Board decision, not Neil's decision. I'm happy to carry that. Just reach out and let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Spooner. Mr. Lyle?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The RTPO did meet on the 31st of last month, and a number of things were covered. One, which is administrative, but we are going to a biannual funding schedule, so we will be in sync with the SmartScale and I believe the CVTA. So all of the financing will be on the same schedule. What had been pointed out or had been discovered is, on an annual basis, we would do something, and then it would wait a year and a half before the SmartScale folks would get to it, and then also there had not been sufficient time for reserves to be built, so any allocations that were dispersed were somewhat almost inconsequential. They weren't large enough to do something worthwhile. I also had the opportunity to see that we have allocated, the RTPO has allocated another $19 million to GRTC to help them with the paratransit program, and that piqued my interest because, as I think all of us in public safety are aware, we do a lot of transport calls in the eastern part of the county from Avery Point, Tuckahoe Pines, and Sheltering Arms. And it was brought to my attention by the CEO of GRTC that we, anybody that is within three-quarters of a mile of an established route, which we have in Goochlin, can utilize the paratransit system. And so I would encourage us to aggressively, politely, but aggressively pursue meetings with Sheltering Arms, Avery Point, and Tuckahoe, well, Tuckahoe Pines falls outside of the three-quarter mile, I'm sorry, but to let them know that paratransit is available and it can be done with no cash box, because GRTC currently has no Fairbox policy in place. That then led me to request the information on the single or the only GRTC line we have in the county. And I learned that when people get off the bus, it's called an alighting. And I was told, well, we have so many alightings, and I didn't know what that meant, but now I do, so I'm happy to share that. But we have been seeing in a condition, an increasing alighting, not to get into it, but in January, there were only 520, I say there were 529 in January, in September, there were 1,325. So, and that is at the Sheltering Arms. So the staff are utilizing that. So the staff are utilizing that. They broke it down on a daily average. It started out at 223 back in January and it's up to 514. So I did not get the number of times, so I missed that detail as to how many times the bus is transiting there to Sheltering Arms, but there are 500, or I should say 415 people in September, 505 in August that are utilizing that. So transportation is being used. So between that and the opportunity to use paratransit, GRTC may be able to help us address some of our issues that we got there. And then there was also a presentation by one of the members and they were sharing for informational purposes what I believe it is the, it's the VACO Legislative Program on Transit. And so they have a number of positions that they have taken. I'll share this with Mr. Carpenter. But one that caught my attention is that there is an option for counties, if they were so inclined to pursue what's called, again, the devolution of secondary roads, where the county could actually assume responsibility for the construction and maintenance. Now, it would be an extremely complicated, as you would imagine, financing process, but it would be something that at least for informational purposes and Mr. Carpenter's free time, which he has none of, we could explore and see if there were some option where we would have a little more control over local roads, where if we needed to widen one, perhaps put in a turn lane or something that would make me happy, we could pursue that. But it would involve some kind of funding mechanism. But I was not aware that the county did have that ability to pursue it. And so I share that with you because I learned something and thought you would find it of interest also. And that's what we did for two and a half hours at the RTPO.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Lyle. I just want to add my thanks to my colleagues. The board spends a considerable amount of time, the board members spend a considerable amount of time working with these regional boards and in regional cooperation. And they bring, these boards have historically brought great resources to the county and they're a big, they're something that moves the needle when we do provide a balanced budget for our citizens. So I think the ongoing efforts are to be commended and thank you all very much for the work y'all are doing. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. I will ask Mr. Carpenter to summarize the items under consent.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, we have six items on the consent agenda tonight. The first item, the board has requested to adopt a resolution affirming Goochlin County's support and participation in Firefly Fiber Broadband's Expanded Regional Internet Service Expansion Project, RISE, and the related 2024 Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, BATTI broadband grant, and authorizing the county administrator to execute the agreements and other documents necessary in furtherance of these projects. The next item, the board has requested to amend and appropriate funds totaling $352,998 to the fiscal year '25 school capital improvement projects and federal grants funds as follows. An appropriation in the amount of $300,000 to the School Capital Improvement Projects Fund for a Goochlin Elementary School Learning Park to be funded by the Preservation Trust Fund from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, and an appropriation in the amount of $52,998 to the Federal Grants Fund for Byrd Elementary School Instructional Initiatives to be funded through Title 1A Funds. No county funds are needed for this request. The board has requested to budget and appropriate funds in the amount of $300,000 to the Contribution Department's Fiscal Year '25 General Fund Budget to be funded by General Fund unassigned fund balance. The contribution would allow the Goochlin Education Foundation to provide a three-year after-school enrichment program with the goal of improving student achievement and school performance. The program will be for kindergarten through fifth-grade students, will be held in all three elementary schools. Benefits to families will include budget-friendly extended learning, a safe environment, homework completion, remediation is needed, and experiencing academic activities. They have committed to annual deliverables and metrics. Next, the board has requested to adopt the following resolution requesting that the Virginia Department of Transportation accept .45 miles of roads in Rocket's Ridge, Section 1 subdivision, into the secondary system of state highways for maintenance. The board has requested to authorize the county administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority for household hazardous waste collection and processing services, which will align with the terms of an existing contract between the CVWMA and its vendor, Clean Harbor Environmental Services, Inc. And finally, the board is asked to approve a request to support the proposed name of Fern Creek for an unnamed tributary located within Goochlin and Louisa Counties. A letter was forwarded to the county administrator from the Virginia Board on Geographic Names on a proposal by the U.S. Board of Geographic Names to name an unnamed stream in Goochlin and Louisa Counties, Fern Creek. This item was provided to both Goochlin and Louisa County staff and was reviewed and researched by both the Goochlin and Louisa County Historical Societies. Neighbors were given an opportunity to weigh in. Both Historical Societies found no precedent names or conflicts with the proposed names, no objective. Let's chair those, the items in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Do we have, oh, do we have any comments or discussion on this consent agenda? Okay. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the consent agenda and I, assuming then we would have an opportunity to comment. But I just, okay.
Now we'll move on to comments and discussion. Mr. Spooner?
Thanks. I did want to talk about item three, the Goochlin County budget, $300,000 for the after-school program. I first thought about this, obviously, the role of government comes in play as far as, you know, what is our role in this? And my opinion that most things are better when government is not involved. And after significant discussion, I feel like this is a great opportunity for the county to kickstart a program that isn't a competition with existing after-school programs, but actually filling in a gap. And if this goes, is successful, I don't see this as something the county continues to fund, but that it becomes self-funded. But I do think we have to look around and we have to look at our community and see what our community needs are as a government and do what we can to see the behaviors that we want. We want our kids here to be successful. We want them to be safe after school. We want parents to have options so that they can work and feel, but know that their children are being cared for and that helps make their lives a little bit easier.
Thank you, Mr. Spooner. Mr. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also will comment on the $300,000, which is now becoming a grant. Reading comprehension is something I am extremely focused on. If you can read as a student years, every other course, it becomes a lot easier to handle. In my understanding and talking with the Goochlin Foundation and folks that have run this program in an adjoining county, is that it is measurable, that we'll have metrics and we'll be able to understand if it's working or not. And if it's not working, I will be extremely comfortable saying it should not receive additional funding. Reading is just the cornerstone of everything in education, which I believe is, I've been led to, I truly do believe this is what it's going to focus on. And so if we can get more people reading, so this is not for guitar lessons, this is not for painting, this is not for, nothing wrong with the fine arts, but this is extremely focused on reading comprehension. And that focus is why I'm happy to support this and look forward to seeing the metrics. Dr. Cromarty mentioned at the town hall meetings, our middle school was a code-red reading comprehension environment and now is up to green, but it took some work. And so if we can do this at the elementary level, comprehension goes up. I think that's money well invested and is one of the core services I think government should provide. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. I just want to add, this program has been very well planned. They've come to us and answered all our questions and I'm incredibly excited for the potential of this. And like Mr. Lyle said, the ability to have the data to hopefully back it up for many, many years to come. So this is an exciting opportunity for us to offer as a county. Mr. Winfrey?
I just want to add, and this is something that all board members have engaged in and sort of dealt into, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to add that we've also made Dr. Cromarty aware of this and he is in support of it.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor? Is this voice, voice vote? Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Oh, oh, no. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, the consent agenda passed. Okay. We'll now move on to new business. Under new business today, we have one item, the reappointment of Patience Armstrong for a two-year term to the Design Review Committee. The term will run from November 6, 2024 to October 31, 2026. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the reappointment of Patience Armstrong to the Design Review Committee as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second. Your choice.
Yeah. Mr. Spooner?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, this is after the fact, but I so appreciate the citizens volunteering to do this. With the recent groundbreaking we had on the new Honda store coming into the county, the Design Review Committee played an integral part in making that new development a better development. They collaborated and took into account our neighbors to the east. They made some designs or recommended some design changes that were incorporated. So I certainly do appreciate Ms. Armstrong's willingness to serve on that committee. It's one of those unsung, behind-the-curtain type of activities that many folks don't realize citizens are doing.
Absolutely. Thank you for those comments. And I will add that Honda dealership will rise quickly and be a great commercial business partner for the county for years to come. And we had a great groundbreaking last week. So with that and seeing no other comments, we will now recess until our 6:00 PM evening board meeting. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, sir. What is that?
We will now reconvene the November 6th meeting of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors. We will start with a Christmas Mother 2024 presentation from Ms. Robin Hillman, who is presenting on behalf of Goochlin Christmas Mother, Belinda Bowles.
Thank you. I'm Robin Hillman, 1458 Timber Ridge. And I'm here, as you mentioned, to speak on behalf of this year's Christmas Mother, which we're very excited to say that it's Belinda Bowles, who's a longstanding member of our community, along with her family. And she sends her deepest regrets for not being here tonight. She was originally planned to come and speak and was unexpectedly not able to come. The Goochlin Christmas Mother Program has been providing resources since 1959 to enable qualified Goochlin residents to purchase food, clothing, and other essential needs during the holiday season. To qualify, the applicants we serve have to meet two types of qualifications. The first thing that they have to be able to meet is they have to be a Goochlin resident and they have to meet income requirements. And then they have to meet one of the other categories or qualifications, which is to have a family with children or to be a senior at the age of 60 or older or to have a documented disability. In October, we had two days at Goochlin Middle School when the residents could apply for the Christmas Mother Program. This slide shows the information that we collect during that process from each applicant. On this slide, the number of persons in a family that we support typically ranges anywhere from one to 10 members in a family. And this slide shows the monthly medium income by the number of persons in that family. So as an example, you'll see that the one member in a family would be $2,472 for that family. If you look at the range of, at the end of that range of 10 people in a family, it's $6,845, which equates to $684 per person. This year, each family will receive a Foodline gift card and a Walmart gift card and a box of non-perishable foods. The Foodline gift card that we are providing is $175 per family and each member in that family will receive the Walmart gift card, which will be $100 per gift card. This year, we will be serving 239 families through the Goochlin Christmas Mother Program, through in that application process. That's how many people have applied. Here are the ways that people can help the Goochlin Christmas Mother Program: by making direct monetary donations, adopting a family. And family adoptions need to be decided by November 24th. You can purchase goods from our Amazon wishlist. So if you're not able to go out and shop and drop it off at one of the many locations that we have food drives, you can order at the wishlist and it'll deliver directly to our distribution center. There are also volunteer opportunities. Our distribution center will be opening next week at Central High Complex. Proximarex is kind enough to allow us to use that facility for the time leading up to the actual distribution day, which is on December 7th. It's a whole community effort that provides these resources. Here is the information of where people can go to purchase the Amazon Wish items or to make a donation through PayPal's or to mail a check to us. And lastly, this is our contact information that if anybody has any questions about the program or wants to volunteer, they can reach out to the Christmas Mother through any one of these contacts. And I thank you for the opportunity to share our program this year and for all the support that the board provides to the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the wonderful work you all in the community.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to citizen comments. We will open the floor for citizen comments. Each speaker must give their name and address. Citizens are reminded that comments should be about items not covered by the public hearings being held later tonight. Comments should be respectful and no more than three minutes in length. Should multiple citizens wish to have a common speaker, they may cede their time in two-minute increments up to a total allotted time of 10 minutes. Per Board's Rules of Procedure, Section 3.2, a reasonable period of time intended to not be more than an hour is allocated for citizens' comment period.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Garmin. I'm at 4003 Rural Virginia Lane in Haydensville. And I stress that for a reason. You'll know in a moment. The first thing I want to do is I wanted to thank Vic Carpenter, who's not here, and Paul Drumright for all the work they did on our hunting issues. And they came out and made a presentation last month, which I really appreciate it. We got a lot of information and so far haven't seen any hunters. Hopefully, it stays that way. The other reason that I wanted to bring something up tonight, and I don't know if this is the right format to do it or not, but I'm speaking personally and for all of our elderly citizens in rural Goochlin County. And the reason I bring that up is I spent three hours this morning trying to get insurance updated, Medicare insurance. I gave my address, 4003 Rural Virginia Lane, Louisa, Virginia. And they could not grasp that I really don't live in Louisa. And I tried to give them my P.O. box, which is Haydensville, explaining my house physically is attached to the dirt in Haydensville in Goochlin County. And I know I can't possibly be the only elderly person in Goochlin County who has that issue. And I know it's nothing that you can change like that. But if it's something that could be brought to, I don't know, the post office or whoever...
The first thing I want to do is I wanted to thank Vic Carpenter, who's not here, and Paul Drumright for all the work they did on our hunting issues. And they came out and made a presentation last month, which I really appreciate it. We got a lot of information and so far haven't seen any hunters. Hopefully, it stays that way. The other reason that I wanted to bring something up tonight, and I don't know if this is the right format to do it or not, but I'm speaking personally and for all of our elderly citizens in rural Goochlin County. And the reason I bring that up is I spent three hours this morning trying to get insurance updated, Medicare insurance. I gave my address, 4,003 Royal Virginia Lane, Louisa, Virginia. And they could not grasp that I really don't live in Louisa. And I tried to give them my P.O. box, which is Haydensville, explaining my house physically is attached to the dirt in Haydensville in Goochlin County. And I know I can't possibly be the only elderly person in Goochlin County who has that issue. And I know, I don't, I know it's nothing that you can change like, like that. But if it's something that could be brought to, I don't know, the post office or whoever, and maybe give us an address that equates to where we actually live, it will help with issues like trying to get insurance and trying to get deliveries. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garmin. Any more citizens? Okay.
Richard, excuse me, Richard Williford, 1670 Old Orchard Lane in Monakin Sabbath. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to highlight what I believe is a shortcoming in the approach that the Commissioner of the Revenues Office uses to determine the assessed value of older vehicles for calculation of personal property taxes. There's a lot of, a lot of words there. Let me, let me elaborate. So at present, in the county, once a vehicle reaches 20 years of age, the Commissioner of the Revenues Office migrates from using the J.D. Power Clean Trade-In Value to the J.D. Power Classic Antique Valuation Figure. This can grossly overestimate an older vehicle's value and therefore taxes due. Let me just describe my own case. So in 2023, last year, my 2004 Toyota Tundra, then 19-years-old, had an assessed value of $5,375. In 2024, the vehicle is now 20-years-old. The county valuation was $13,450, an increase of 150%. And I can assure you that my truck is neither an antique nor a classic. And I've got pictures, I'll be happy to show you all. So what I'm here tonight to suggest, the county has an appeals process, which I am pursuing. That involves pictures, paperwork, in some cases, an affidavit. It's kind of a hassle for the taxpayer. So what I would ask the board to do is request that the Commissioner of the Revenue explore very different valuation alternatives for these older vehicles. Many taxpayers may not catch the valuation overstatement. For example, I did not in the first half personal property tax bill that I got. You know, you, you have four or five vehicles, or you have a trailer. You know, you, you do look at your real estate assessment because you're curious. And real estate goes up, automobiles depreciate. So I have talked to the office here, the Commissioner of the Revenue, and they're the ones that explained how they do this. I didn't make this up. In fact, I would say they need to correct the county's website because the way they're doing the valuation for older vehicles is certainly not mentioned, as I just stated and as they've repeated to me. There are several publicly available valuation tools on the internet. I pulled up Edmunds for my car, my truck, and it came up $5,500, which is not too far from last year's assessment, but a far cry from $13,450. And I guess a further concern, I think in a county like ours, where, you know, there's different levels of income, some folks have old vehicles, trucks, farmers. And, you know, this is a tax burden for them, much more so than it would be maybe for me. And so I would just like to appeal to the board to kind of investigate what's going on, how they're looking at these older vehicles in the Commissioner's office and respond appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Williford.
And not that you want this, but here are my documentation, my bills and my pictures of my car.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, did someone ask?
Thank you. Any more citizens? Okay. Seeing none, I will now close the floor. We will now move on to public hearings. The first is Ordinance 6214, an amendment. An ordinance amending County Code, Section 14-251, Takahoe Creek Service District, to remove from the service district a parcel located at 655 Monakin Drive. Mr. Wayne Stevens will present.
Good evening, Chairman of Orders and members of the board. Excuse me. I'm gonna go through this relatively quickly. I'll be happy to stop if anybody has any questions. But I believe you've seen this a couple of times already because we had a ordinance amendment earlier to, to make things more fair for folks who'd been in the district for a long time. This actual, this application was actually impetus for that revision to our ordinance. So as you know, TCSD's been around since 2002. Got a few more than 2,500 parcels in it. Have a heck of a lot more people coming in it than are going out of it. But we do, we have had a few parcels exit since the district was formed. The proposed ordinance amendment is in response to this application for removal from Mr. and Mrs. Dickinson, who are the owners of a property at Tax Map 63-4-0-7-0. They live on Monakin Drive, which is a private road that pretty much crosses the property of the Richmond Country Club. And they have a single-family dwelling, which was constructed in 2005. It serves as their principal residence. And the property's been in the TCSD since 2002, basically the inception of it. You can see, this is a map showing where they are. The aerial's not turned on in this particular picture, but you actually have to kind of drive through the parking lot of the Richmond Country Club to get to this road. Chapter 14-52A4 of the ordinance contains the primary criteria for accepting applications for removal from the TCSD. Applications must be filed between June 1st and July, 1st of the even-numbered years. They're considered in the order which they're received. They can only be considered in the year which they're filed. And the taxable parcels of equal or greater value than the applicant's parcel must have been added to the TCSD in the preceding 24 months. Furthermore, they must currently not be served by public water or sewer. They cannot be located in an area which is planned to receive public water or sewer service in the next five years. They have to enter the TCSD honor before December 31st, 2002. And the parcel cannot be zoned or used by a commercial use. Dickinson's parcel meets all of these criteria. There's some additional here since this is specifically related to the board in deciding whether to grant an application. The Board of Supervisors may consider the following criteria, which is pretty much a rehash of what I just discussed. Apart from the impact of the parcel removal to the overall operations of the utility system, which I could tell you it's not going to affect our overall operations at all. So this is the, these are the, this is the value of the parcels that were added to the TCSD between June 1st, 2022 and May 31st, 2024. It's over $6 million worth of land, primarily by when the Gazir farm came in so that Songbird could get public water and sewer utilities. That, that jacked things way up for this particular period. They did file their application within the prescribed time. Their home is currently valued at $839,400, which is well below $6.5 million. They are not served by public water or sewer. We have no plans to bring public water or sewer anywhere near this property in the next five years. Again, they've been in the TCSD since its inception, and they are not zoned for and are not utilized for any commercial use. So effectively, they meet all of the criteria. It is still obviously a board decision whether or not you let them out of the district. But I'm just letting you know from a standpoint of what, what their qualifications, they do seem they're qualified. And why we don't make recommendations to you, I can't tell you that the DPU has no objections to this parcel being removed. This would be the ordinance change. You'd basically go into 14-251A1 and strike the parcel number for the Dickinson's parcel. And that's about it. Are there any questions?
Any questions of the board?
Yes, sir. You and I have had a conversation on this. And I think the backstory is if they acquired this property within, I believe, the last five years. And so they were not the ones who opted to be in
Correct.
the district. They bought it. And as we have discovered, many people find their own property in the Takahoe Creek Service District, not knowing that they are buying property in the Takahoe Creek Service District because we're not allowed to require that to be disclosed. So they're saying, I'm paying for something I don't get and I'm not ever going to get. And so the, the logic of accommodating this certainly resonates with me. But I just want to make sure, it wasn't like they decided to be part of the district themselves. They bought property that someone else had decided.
You are correct, sir. The, the, this couple, the Dickinsons, did not bring the property into the district. A previous owner did in 2002.
It's one of those, oh, whoops.
Yes, sir, exactly.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Any other questions? Mr. Stevens, thank you very much. I will now open the floor for public comments. Seeing no comments, I will now close the floor. Members of the board, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. And I move that the board adopt this ordinance amending County Code, Section 14-251, to remove this tax parcel from the Takahoe Creek Service District.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Any discussion from the board? Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Would you take the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyle.
Aye.
Mr. Winfrey.
Aye.
Mr. Christie.
Aye.
Mr. Spoonire.
Aye.
Mr. Patterson.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our second item. An application by Todd and Carol Donaldson requesting a conditional use permit for an accessory family housing unit detached on 4.05 acres at 2570 Britland Drive. Ms. Jamie Sherry will present.
There we go. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our next public hearing, our next public hearing is an application by Todd and Carol Donaldson requesting a conditional use permit for an accessory family housing unit detached in District 4. The vicinity map shows the location of the property in the northeastern portion of the county. And the aerial photo shows the primary house to the east of the circular driveway and the existing structure that is proposed for the accessory dwelling circled in yellow. The property is zoned residential rural, as are the other properties located within the Britland subdivision. The properties surrounding the subdivision are all zoned agricultural limited. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates the property and all the adjacent properties as rural enhancement area. The property was rezoned in 1990 to rural residential with proffered conditions to create the Britland subdivision. The proposed accessory structure is an existing storage building that's being renovated into a pool house. The pool is also being constructed at this time. It should be noted that the applicant is requesting a 10-year expiration date. For first-time approvals of conditional use permits, the standard is a five-year expiration date. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. With the imposed conditions, this use is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. There was a community meeting back in July and three citizens attended. There was discussion about the application process, how a dwelling is defined, byright uses versus conditional use permit uses, and zoning enforcement. Attendees at the meeting were supportive of the application. At their September meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval as amended with a proposed change to Condition 6 expiration from a five-year renewal to a 10-year renewal with a 5-0 vote, and nobody spoke at the public hearing. The recommended conditions in front of you are from the Planning Commission, and they are all standard conditions with the exception of Number 6, as it pertains to the expiration date. Conditions 1 through 3 pertain to the use, limiting the accessory dwelling to family members and prohibiting it from being rented. Conditions 4 and 5 are related to safety, requiring a carbon monoxide and smoke detector be installed and maintained, as well as emergency access be provided and maintained. Condition 6 reflects the 10-year expiration that the Planning Commission recommended. And the last condition is the standard transfer or lease, requiring the, the property owner, the leasie, to notify the county if they sell or lease the property. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions. The Donaldsons are also in attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Sherry. Any questions from the board? Does the applicant wish to say anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. I will now open the floor for public comments. Seeing none, I will now close the floor. Members of the board, do I have a motion?
I move the board to grant conditional use permits, CU 2024-18, subject to imposed conditions as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Thune?
Yes. I don't know how in the last six months we've gotten on this trend of going against our standard practice of five-year CUPs to 10-years. I think last month or the month before, it came before us and we didn't grant it. And I, again, I think my colleague has said, you know, we don't want to be in the, the habit of picking winners and losers. And I've been pretty vocal about this. If we want to change our process, then we should properly change it to allow for these things. And I hope staff is working on that because we've, we've brought it up a couple of times. This one is a little different for me and I can, I can, I can reason my way around why I would support it. It's my understanding, and Ms. Sherry, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this is a pool house. But because they're putting, they want to put a stove in to be able to cook, which I appreciate, you know, food when I'm outside, they have to go through. So I'm almost apologetic they had to go through this in the first place. So that seems like a lot of government oversight. But I, I can't be in support of this. But I just want to be on record, I'm not, that, this is not going to be the norm for me. And if we want to change it, then we should change it and then potentially go back to all the people that we've given five-year CUPs for this and then extend them. But that's all I got to say about that.
Any other comments? Mr. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I appreciate Mr. Spoonire's comments. I have been asking, I guess for the last year, since I joined the board in January, for these auxiliary dwelling units to, to make the change to 10-years. And I guess this is one of the, we're in slow motion on it. And so I would be disappointed if we didn't take a solution to what I see as a fixable or a changeable situation. And that is, on these auxiliary dwelling units, make them 10-year. Because as my understanding from staff, when the renewal comes up at five years, there's a community meeting, nobody shows up, the fee's filed, and then they come before us. And it, it seems to be a process that isn't fixing a problem. It's simply creating a governmental, I don't want to call it interference, but I guess I will, in, in the situation. So I iterate what Mr. Spoonire said. I would be thrilled, since we have a short meeting next month, if we saw a change to this ordinance that we could address and, and not have to do these exceptions on these auxiliary dwelling units. I think the five-year has a place, and it may be on something commercial or something that we're kind of putting a square peg in a round hole sometimes. But on these, I really would like to see us go to a 10-year. And I encourage staff to explore how quickly we might get to that. Because I, I don't want Mr. Spoonire to have these philosophical conflicts there. I do not. So I, I am very happy to support the 10-year extension because I think it is an immediate solution to a long, while the permanent solution's being addressed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may clarify for the board, as well as those listening, there's not an ordinance that sets it at 10-years. That is internal policy. So nothing would have to come before this board for action. But to the extent staff is changing on it or able to make those changes, it would occur without board action, just so everybody understands.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Mr. Christie?
Yeah. You know, I'm in favor of this 10-years for the auxiliary dwellings as well. And I just want it reflected that there is an auxiliary dwelling coming up in District 1. And I know that they will be asking for a 10-year. I just hope that this courtesy is also extended to them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. Thank you, Mr. Christie. Seeing no other comments, I'll just add, in this situation, I would say, in my opinion, common sense prevails. When there are any unknowns related, I like personally the five-year initial policy, and then we've shown a size, a hefty precedent for granting 15-years after the individual is shown, you know, they're the good, a good resident and following all the rules and set forth in the cup and those things. But this does not seem to have any of those unknowns, so I'm fully supportive, and the beauty of finding a adjustment to the policy is making sure it applies evenly across. So we will work on that, but in this case, I think, as is shared by the board members, the 10 cents, 10-years makes a lot of sense, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Wipper?
Consideration, I think, should be given to the complexities of a conditional use permit. This certainly is, is a simple request. Some conditional use permits, granted, have many complexities or many provisions in them, and the, the five-year period allows an opportunity to see that the applicant is complying with those conditions and whether or not there are complaints from citizens and so forth. And then I think consideration for the renewal should probably be given consideration for 10-years because particularly if they've complied and had no complaints and that type of thing. But we've had an opportunity to look, see how the conditional conditions were complied with, so.
Thank you, Ms. Winfrey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just amplify on that. I, I do not want to be misinterpreted that I would want us to give up our ability to revoke a CUP. So whether it's, if there's a, a, something that occurs that is in conflict with the CUP in the first year, I would be very comfortable with staff or this board, however that process works, to revoke the CUP. So whether it's a 10-year CUP and the conflict or, or the non-compliance occurs in year two, so I, I do not want it to be seen that this board would not have the ability to revoke a CUP, regardless whether it's year two or year seven. I, I would like to think that the CUP would always be adhered to. So the 10-year is simply my hope that we would remove the burden of government on something that is, in this instance, family-oriented. So I don't want to give up the ability to revoke it if there is non-compliance, but don't make people keep coming back here.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Gillespie, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, Mr. Winfrey.
Aye.
Mr. Lyle.
Yea.
Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Christie.
Yes.
Mr. Vawkers.
Aye.
Motion passes by vote.
Okay. That wraps us, that wraps up our agenda for the evening. We will now adjourn as follows. To the Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 Board of Supervisors Audit and Finance Committee Meeting, time to be determined. The Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 Regular Afternoon Meeting, time to be determined, and the 6:00 p.m. Night Meeting. And finally, the Monday, December 16th, 2024, 4:30 p.m. Joint Work Session of the Board of Supervisors and the School Board to be held directly across the Hall in Conference Room 270. That meeting is open to the public. With that, we will adjourn.